Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hubley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Evening, good evening, welcome. Welcome to tonight's proclamation meeting. This is actually one of our favorite meetings of the month because it allows us to recognize some incredible people, really amazing folks that are doing some wonderful things in our community. It's our chance to thank you and to lift you up so that the community knows all the good things that you are doing. And what we will begin with is the way we begin all of our meetings, that is by asking God's blessing on these proceedings. And I'm gonna ask Reverend Richard Jesse from Greater Shady Grove Missionary Baptist Church to please come to the podium and ask a blessing on us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, and your staff, we are grateful to be here. And as I prepare to pray, I want to say that we, Friends of Historic Claflin, had just celebrated our 151st anniversary. And what we are proposing to this city is that we create a new atmosphere of love and camaraderie and working together. And there are so many unresolved issues that people have that the only way that we can get that accomplished is we learn to forgive one another for our differences and then move on.
Amen.
And we want to set an example for that today. Let us pray. Most holy and righteous Father our God, we come before you in the name of Jesus. And we're coming at a time, Father God, that we have much to be grateful for. Life is so good for so many people. You have blessed and you have answered prayers and you are doing what you do. You encourage us, Father God, to seek a better life, to do better, to do good, to do what's right. And we pray, oh Lord, that we will indeed follow your direction, follow your inspiration, follow the way that you will have us to go. We look up this city leadership right now, new leadership, and we're grateful for our mayor and for his staff and those who work with him and all of the other city leaders that we have. We pray today, oh Lord God, that in the midst of all that is going on, and you know what's going on in our communities, you know that the community does not go to church anymore, you know, Lord God, that the church has a great responsibility in leading this city in a way that Christ would go in a mighty way. And we're coming to you right now first to ask you to forgive our sin, forgive the iniquity of this present age. The iniquity of this present age is great. We pray, oh Lord God, that you would touch hearts of men, women, boys, and girls and help us to understand that that is a better way than what we see sometimes in the news and what some of us are experiencing. And we pray, oh Lord God, not only will you forgive us, but help us to experience true repentance. We pray, oh Lord God, that you will show us how to create an atmosphere that will cover politics, that will cover an economic system that just has too much gap between the haves and the have-nots. We pray, oh Lord God, for our educational process. We have so many things going on in education that are good, but those things that are bad, Father God, just distract us from all of the good. We pray, oh Lord God, that you will help us, Father God, to create a new attitude of family and community and doing well for one another and doing good to one another. We pray, Lord, you would teach us how to practice the golden rule, doing it to others as you would have others do it to you, talking to people the way you want to be talked to, treating folk the way you want to be treated. We pray, Father God, that even in this council today, we have issues that we want to resolve, but some of them are unresolvable. And when you've had situations where people participate in the rumor mill and all of the other negative things that are going on, sometimes the only thing that you can do is to forgive. So right now, Lord, we ask that you would just touch the hearts of your children, touch the hearts of those who don't know you. And then, Father God, help us to live the type of life that's pleasing in your sight. We want to set an example. There have been some things said about me that were not good. So we want to forgive those who said those things. They called me a crook and all the other things that have been said. And as we forgive those who have reviled us and said all types of manner of evil against us, we pray that your spirit would just move throughout this city, Father God, and reactivate that spirit of love and forgiveness and then help us, Father God, to just do better these next 40 years. We thank you for Claflin School. That's gonna be a shining light on the hill that's gonna do for this present age what it did for Columbus 151 years ago. And we just pray, Father God, that you would give us the will that we will indeed do your will. It's in the wonderful and the precious and the powerful name of Jesus that we pray. Let all who believe say amen.
Amen. Reverend Jesse, thank you, sir, for that prayer and thank you for what you've been doing to preserve the history of Claflin School.
Sir, thank you.
All right, we'll get started. We'll get started. The first proclamation, the first folks that we want... Oh, you know what? I forgot the most important part. Goodness gracious, Alexis, my assistant, was gonna come up here and kick me in the shins for forgetting her daycare over at Fourth Street. Would you folks please come up and stand up front and lead us in the pledge? The rest of you, please stand.
I pray to the Lord, to my Father, your eyes and America, to a brother for which I serve, one nation, and they are in the physical living, lifting just for all.
If you would, if y'all would, we'd love for you to tell us your name and how old you are.
Ava.
Let's... All right, try that again.
Ava.
Ava, and how old are you, Ava?
Four.
Four. Why don't you hand the mic to... What's your name, dear?
I'm Teresa.
And how old is she?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Bella.
And how old are you?
Three.
And how old are you?
Three.
Three. And how old are you?
Three.
Three. What about this young lady on the end?
Carly.
And which... How old are you?
Three.
I could've guessed that. Parents, if you would, stand up, let us thank you for giving us this gift. Boy, it can only go downhill from there, can it? Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that I believe two of the students belong to Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
They are excellent. Three years old.
And then I see Antonio Owens. You've got someone, too. From Methrow.
That was wonderful. That was wonderful. All right, the first proclamation, the first group we're gonna be recognizing tonight is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Counselor Barnes is going to read the proclamation. Counselor, would you hit your button, please? So I can get your mic turned on. Good to go.
It's my pleasure to read this proclamation.
Ladies, y'all come on up.
Thank you, ladies, please. And thank you for all that y'all do in the area of domestic violence. I'm so glad that this comes each year to let people bring this in the forefront so individuals can just know what a serious problem this is. So it's my pleasure to read this proclamation to you, and it reads thusly, it says, "Whereas the Georgia Commission on Family Violence defines domestic violence as a pattern of abusive behavior in any relationship that is used by one partner to gain or maintain power and control over another intimate partner. Common abusive tactics include physical violence, sexual violence, isolation, economic abuse, emotional abuse, intimidation, reproductive coercion, and stalking. And whereas in 2018, 143 Georgia citizens lost their lives due to domestic violence. And whereas in 2018, Georgia was ranked 25th highest in the nation for its rate of men killing women. And nearly one-third of women in Georgia experienced the terrorizing effects of domestic violence in their lifetimes. And whereas studies show that domestic violence is committed primarily by men against women, however, women and men in same-sex relationships experienced domestic violence at the same rate as heterosexual women. And whereas relationship violence amongst teens is an extensive problem, Georgia has been ranked number one in the nation in teen dating violence. And whereas there were 17 domestic violence murders, suicides in 2018, leaving behind hundreds of family members and friends. And whereas in 37% of the cases studied through Georgia's Domestic Violence Fatality Review Project, children witnessed the domestic violence homicide. And whereas the mission of the Domestic Violence Roundtable, Inc., is to provide a coordinated community response to domestic violence, the objectives are to educate and provide leadership to the Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit to effectively respond to the issues associated with domestic violence. And whereas Domestic Violence Roundtable, Inc., is committed to ending the cycle of domestic violence by acting as a referral organization for victims of abuse to ensure that they have access to resources and other useful information. Domestic Violence Roundtable, Inc., is dedicated to holding batterers accountable through advocacy, community partnerships, education, and awareness. And whereas the Domestic Violence Roundtable, Inc.'s focus is on increasing victim safety and offender accountability through the coordinated community efforts of domestic violence agencies, rape crisis centers, legal aid, survivors of family violence, law enforcement agencies, court administrators, concerned community members, and professionals. And whereas the Domestic Violence Roundtable, Inc. urges all citizens to remember the victims of domestic violence, celebrate the survivors, and work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community during Domestic Violence Awareness Months. And now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim October 29, 2019, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month."
Ladies, thank you so much for what you do. Thank you, Counselor Barnes. If you would, make a few remarks, and we'd love to meet the rest of the folks that are there with you.
Okay. Good evening. I just wanna... My name is Rhonda Dowell. I am the chairperson of the Domestic Violence Roundtable. And I just want to thank you all for being so supportive of our mission and the organization. I would like to invite you to our candlelight visual, which is next week, Tuesday. It'll start from a walk from Hope Harbor. Hope Harbor will be putting on the walk. We will be starting from Country's Barbecue. Then we will head on over to the Government Center on the plaza ground outside to commence with our visual. We'd love to see you guys there. Again, I thank you so much for your support in this issue. It is a big issue, and we see that it's happening so much and so frequently around here. It's just, we have to do something. We have to come together and do something about this. And I'm just gonna let everybody else introduce themselves.
Good evening. I am Annie Davis. I am the vice chair for the Domestic Violence Roundtable. And again, I do appreciate you all having us here tonight. And we do appreciate the support that you have given us through your city departments, which are the police, the Solicitor's Office, all of those departments have come together to say, this is no longer a private affair. This is very public, and we are very serious about holding batterers accountable for their actions. The question is not, why doesn't she leave? It's why doesn't he stop doing what he's doing to her? So again, we thank you and we applaud you for all of your efforts. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have brought our signature pins. We would like to offer them to you for you to wear on your lapels and your dresses to say, I am aware of what's going on and I am committed to stopping it. We also have a flyer for you that you can post up for all of our events. The one signature event that I would hope that we would have some city representation is we will have an on-the-table conversation. Here, we will talk about what the gaps are, why does it keep happening, and what we can do to be a stronger Columbus in order to make a stronger Georgia. So I do challenge you and ask you to please join us on all of our events that we have for the evening. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Felicia Belbrumf. I work with Georgia Legal Services, and I hold the position of treasurer for the Domestic Violence Roundtable.
Hello, my name's Edwina Thomas, and I'm just very proud to be a concerned citizen and a part of this sensational group. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Holliday. I am a new member of the Domestic Roundtable Committee, and I am also a domestic violence survivor, and I will be keynote speaker on October 8, I hope this season.
Thank you.
At the Government Center.
Thank you, ma'am.
I forgot to introduce, this is Stella Marie. She's actually a support dog that is in training to be a therapist dog, therapy dog.
Glad my wife's not here. You have a tough time leaving with that dog in your arms. Y'all come around, let us shake your hand, thank you for what you do.
Yes, the ladies forgot to mention, but I did ask, the roundtable discussion for domestic violence is on October 22 at 11:30 a.m. at Mildred Terry Library. Am I correct?
Yes. The holiday, yes.
So those that are listening, if they're interested, that's where you need to be on the 22nd of October at 11:30, Mildred Terry Library. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for making that clear. And the next proclamation is in recognition of National Arts and Humanities Month. I think Cameron Bean and Carrie Beth Wallace are coming forward, and Counselor Thomas is gonna present this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to read this to end of the record tonight, recognizing National Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the nation's 95,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local art agencies, state arts and humanities councils, and the six U.S. jurisdictions have regularly issued official proclamation and on an annual basis designated October as National Arts and Humanities Month. And whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American, and the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country. And whereas cities and states, through their local and state art agencies and representing thousands of cultural organizations, have celebrated the value and the importance of culture in the lives of Americans and the health of thriving communities during National Arts and Humanities Month for several years. Whereas the arts and human... I'm sorry, the arts and culture industry also strengthen our national economy by generating $166.3 billion in total economic activity annually, $26 billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 5 million jobs. And whereas the arts and culture industry strengthen our local economy by generating $76 million in total economic activity annually, over 700,000 in state and local sales and lodging tax revenue, and is the eighth-largest employer in our community. And whereas the creative economy drives tourism and commerce, supports American workers, and makes up 4.3% of the annual GDP, I'm sorry, proposed federal legislation titled "The Create Arts" would support the economic development of the creative economy. And whereas the city of Columbus joins in to celebrate and promote the arts and cultures in our nation and community, now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Arts and Humanities Month. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your support. My name is Carrie Beth Wallace. I am the founder and editor-in-chief of The Columbocite. It is a new digital publication that is devoted to finding the best in arts and culture, and it's a privilege to do what we do. We are gonna scoot in just a moment to attend a block party downtown. We have 200 or 300 people we're hoping that will stop by to learn more about what's happening in Columbus, Georgia, and the surrounding areas for the entire season, but also for this month. So please stay tuned and learn more about that.
Thanks. Carrie Beth, I'm Cameron Bean, recovering from a cold, which is why I sound more like a man than you've ever heard me in my life. But I want to thank Carrie Beth for being here and for all the work she's doing with The Columbocite to help tell the story and promote the goings-on of all our arts and culture organizations. I've known most of you for a long time on council and mayor and very much appreciate all the support that you've shown, the arts and culture industry in Columbus, over these several years. I think there's no doubt the arts and culture have enhanced and enriched the lives of everyone in Columbus. It's played a pivotal role in the transformation of our community and continues to serve all of our citizens very well. And we are very proud to join the rest of the nation in celebrating this month to celebrate and to recognize the importance of the arts and culture industry on our nation, but here in Columbus especially, our city. So we thank you for all you do, and we'll be in touch.
Cameron, Carrie Beth, listen, I gotta tell you, a personal observation. I think the arts and cultural scene in Columbus, Georgia is advancing like never before, and it's largely due to folks like you who embrace it, try to make sure that folks know what's going on. I just left something I didn't think I'd ever say. I just left Warren Williams Apartments, where they dedicated a new sculpture in commemorating a conversation with Warren Williams in public housing. So art is everywhere, and it is so much fun to watch it become such a vital part of this community. So thank you so much for what y'all do. Come around, let us thank you. Next, Counselor Barnes is gonna be presenting a proclamation in recognition of National Colonial Heritage Month. Lynn Tate?
Jan Caves.
Teresa Baker. Hardest job I've ever seen is making something out of former Council Mike Baker, her husband. So welcome, both of you. Y'all, please come up to the podium.
It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. It reads thusly, it says, "Whereas the Major Peterfield Chapter of the National Society of Colonial Dames 17th Century of Columbus, Georgia, is locally sponsoring a National Colonial Heritage Month during the month of October 2019. And whereas the National Colonial Heritage Month brings to mind the first courageous settlers who arrived in America and who determined the direction for the formation of our country, who as a members of this society by virtue of their lineal descent from those early arrivals, feel an obligation to work for the preservation of the priceless legacy that these early arrivals left to all American citizens. And whereas they continue to convey the true meaning of their inheritance by reminding us that our privilege is to live in a free country has stemmed from loving our country, obeying its laws, respecting its flag, and defending it against all enemies. And whereas the mayor and council of Columbus, Georgia, join the citizens of Columbus, Georgia in observing this month as a means of reinforcing the priceless legacy that we inherit with our citizenship, in order to help preserve our rich culture and heritage with a deep respect for their principles upon which our great country was founded. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Colonial Heritage Month in the city of Columbus, Georgia."
I am Jan Caves, and I'm president of the Major Peterfield Chapter, Colonial Dames 17th Century. And Colonial Dames 17th Century means that we have traced our ancestors back to prior to 1700. And we are very active in Columbus, and it comes to mind that two of the things that we have done recently in Columbus is that we have marked Wenton School and the Wind House as historic places, among others, but those are two that come to mind. And we thank you so much for recognizing the month this year as this month as Colonial Heritage Month.
Ms. Baker?
Hello, I'm Teresa Baker, and I am treasurer of Colonial Dames. Thank you so much for this recognition.
Well, thank y'all for what you do. Y'all do so much in the community, and we're so grateful for it. Please come around, let us thank you. Please come around, let us thank you.
Listen, I think I skipped.
Y'all, we've all come a long way.
Oh, gosh, well, sort of. I haven't, y'all haven't. Good to see you, girl. Well, y'all too. Y'all going to the ghost tour, aren't you? Aren't you going, y'all going somewhere? Karen said y'all were. You better check.
Next up, Counselor Thomas will present a proclamation to Mike Smith and Jody Granger. Are they both here? No. Kyle, you want to, are y'all going to let them out of work, or you want to come here and represent? Okay.
Maybe we can get them in at a later date. This is, this is getting sort of to be old hat with us, because every time the state has some kind of a competition for public works, folks, our folks win. And so it's nice to have you here and to be able to recognize, once again, some of the winners who work for the City of Columbus. Whereas Mike Smith and Jody Granger completed a series of courses along with other landfill equipment operators, waste truck drivers, and mechanics completing obstacles to find out who is the best in the state. And whereas the Georgia Chapter of Solid Waste Association of North America hosts a landfill truck equipment and mechanic road EO each year to spotlight solid waste workers on the front line. And whereas the Columbus Consolidated Government Public Works employees and leaders work diligently to gain knowledge of equipment, tactics, and achieve peak performance. And whereas the Columbus Consolidated Government Public Works employees and leaders use their specific skills, talents, and specialized knowledge in creative and innovative ways to fulfill citizens and the city's needs. And whereas Mike Smith placed first in the rubber tire loader competition, and whereas Jody Granger placed second in the tractor trailer competition. And whereas the Columbus Consolidated Government is fortunate, is fortunate, is very fortunate to have these highly skilled and talented operators and drivers to represent this city. And whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by these outstanding employees. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, as Mike Smith Day, and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, as Jody Granger Day. Congratulations to these two fine employees.
Now Kyle, when you present it, we expect you to stand too. And applaud, give them, pass that standing ovation on to them.
I can't accept their award. They are truly phenomenal operators, and we're very fortunate to have them. One of the ways we keep such great talent is to send them to these competitions and remind them of how good they are, and they love it, and we appreciate y'all recognizing them, and they will truly be honored by it. Thank you.
We've got a couple of proclamations for them. If you want to come up here, we'll pass them on to you, and if you give them to them for us. Come, thank you. All right. We are blessed with some pretty incredible employees, and even some that we've somehow let retire. I don't know how we're going to let that happen, but Charmaine Crabbe has a proclamation that she's going to present to Gloria Weston Smart.
It is my honor to read this and to question. Whereas Gloria Weston Smart has been awarded the Community Involvement Award by the American Public Works Association, and whereas Gloria Weston Smart has been employed with Keep Columbus Beautiful Affiliate City of Columbus, Georgia for 20 years. Her employment with the Department of Public Works came by an innovative budget transfer of placing this affiliate under the Department of Public Works. And for many years, Public Works and Keep Columbus Beautiful have been partners in diverting waste from our landfills by establishing creative programs, not just within the community, but within the Muskogee County School District. And whereas Gloria Weston Smart has proven over and over again that a partnership with any community affiliate and Public Works is a partnership that can go wrong, because that can't go wrong, because both strive for the same outcome, a clean community, a smarter community, and most importantly, a community that takes accountability for its appearance. And it took many years of working together and partnering together to show the Columbus community that Keep Columbus Beautiful and Public Works are serious about our environment, and this confidence has proved financial support for programs implemented by Gloria Weston Smart. And whereas some of the programs established and organized through her leadership are Help the Hooch Chattahoochee River Cleanup Activities, which engage over 11,200 volunteers and collected more than 98,700 pounds of trash from the Columbus Waterline. Annual Household Hazardous Waste and Electronic Equipment Collection Day brought in 88,400 pounds of waste and 7,800 pounds of paper shredded. Annual Shoe Recycling Campaign called "I Gave My Souls to KCBC" diverted approximately two tons of shoes from our landfill and are provided to funds2.org for recycling and distributing to developing countries. And whereas, the department continues to manage its, wow, that's a, how do you pronounce it?
Putrescent.
Putrescent. Putrescent, thank you. Landfill, that's a tough one. It is apparent that her programs, her involvement, and her drive has assisted this Department of Public Works with diverting 30,000 tons of waste, plastics, metals, cardboard, tires, et cetera, from our current sanitary landfill through multiple diversion programs. Whereas Gloria Weston Smart has accomplished so many great things and understands community service at its best. She is one of many of our Public Works professionals who are actively involved in this community and work tirelessly to engage others in keeping our community clean. And whereas, all citizens of Columbus and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by this outstanding employee. Therefore, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, as Gloria Weston Smart Day. Congratulations.
Mayor Henderson, City Manager, and Deputy City Managers, and Counselors, I just want you all to know, it has been such a pleasure to service, to serve this community for 20 years. I thank God for the opportunity for allowing me to be the eyes, the ears, the mouth, and the hands of what he created first, which was our environment before he created us. And then we created pollution. And so I just thank you all for the opportunity for me to work, to engage our commissioners in active activities that promote good stewardship of our environment. And we could not have done that without the support of this council. And so we want you all to know that we appreciate you in every way for helping us to do the things that we could do to make Columbus a safer, a cleaner, and a more beautiful place for us all to live. And I'm thankful to my family for being here to support me, as well as Kyle, as Deputy Director for Public Works. I appreciate them for being here, and my great-great nieces, and I thank you all for your support.
Would you introduce your family?
Well, I actually want them to introduce themselves.
Let them introduce themselves, okay.
I'm Brandon Bynum, I'm her nephew.
And this is his daughter?
Kennedy.
I'm Tara, I'm her niece, and this is my husband.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Bynum, and this is my baby girl, Erin Bynum, also Ms. Gloria's nephew, I'm sorry.
My name is Julius Graham, a proud 42-year employee, a citizen of the city of Columbus, and a very dear friend and special person, Gloria. And thank you all for recognizing her. She deserves it. She has, I've known her, and I'm quite sure you all have too, to know that she has been a dedicated, loyal, and hard-working employee. And we welcome her to the retirement environment.
Kyle, did you want to say anything?
Yes, on behalf of Public Works, we are so proud of Gloria's achievements and her career, all the lives she's touched, you know, kids and adults of all ages. Her message of environmental stewardship and education will live on in her legacy. And I've let Gloria know that it's everybody's goal, especially my goal, when I get to my stage in the career. To look back, I was planning on not saying retirement. To look back and know that what you've done really made a difference. And I don't want to make it sound cliche, but what she has done, she's carved out a career where an individual can stand alone and have truly made a difference, and we're very proud of her for that. We'll miss her.
Counselor Woodson.
Gloria, you know I can't stay quiet. We've known each other since the day I came upon this council. You have always, always, will be Keep Columbus Beautiful. You nurture it, your passion, your way of teaching us to be more careful, more awareness of our environment, and all the other things that you do that people are not aware of. I'm pretty sure that if my colleague Evelyn was here, she would also say to you the same thing, that we are blessed, and we're very grateful in our community to have someone like yourself. You will be missed, but I know you'll still be part of this community and part of Keep Columbus Beautiful. I don't see you going anywhere. Home, maybe, stay a little while, but Keep Columbus Beautiful will still be you. And I would like to say to you, in many times that I've worked with you, you're an amazing woman, and have gone through trials and tributes, and have been a champion. You are a great example of what community leadership is, and I want to say to you and your family, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say to Gloria Weston Smart, thank you for your commitment, your dedication, for your service to this government and to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. You talk about commitment, that's commitment right there, and she's left, or she's leaving her mark on Columbus. And, you know, I think about, you know, all of the efforts that have come from her, from cigarette butts being tossed out of cars and on the sidewalk and asphalt, to cleaning up the river. And so, but thank you for your commitment and dedication. We shall forever remember you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
I can't say anything, everybody said it. I can remember when I PCS out the military, the first person to city government, we had a little class that citizens would go to at the various parks and wrecks, and I attended, and that was you, Gloria. It was many years ago, so you have really been the torchbearer for keeping Columbus beautiful. And you will be missed, but never forgotten. And I just want to thank you, as a citizen, for all that you've done for the citizen and the City of Columbus, Georgia. And as an elected official, I'd like to thank you for all that you've done, and you will be missed, but never forgotten.
Thank you so much.
Gloria, lastly, I won't be long, but I'll tell you that they're correct. Your fingerprints are all over this community. And I remember when you guys were first starting Keep Columbus Beautiful, and how much of a struggle it was to try to get that ingrained in people's heads. And I know how good you are at your mission, because I think my wife just spent $50 on straws.
That's right.
You've gotten her swear, where she's sworn off, plastic straws, so now we're having to buy straws. So, thank you, I think. And one last thing, you have had some professional hurdles to clear with getting Keep Columbus Beautiful, and you've had some personal hurdles to clear, and I just want to tell you that you have my admiration. When I think of Gloria Weston Smart, I think of a woman with class, and with integrity, and with style. So thank you for leaving your mark on Columbus.
Thank you.
Y'all come around, let us thank you.
It's another little keep my right there.
Next up, Counselor Woodson has a proclamation to present to the Basics Chattahoochee Valley. Is Helena Coates, yes, here? Hit your button.
Well, with great honor, I have the privilege to read this, as demonstrated today, the beauty of our children, starting from birth all the way to adulthood. So this proclamation is really on time after what we have seen today with the children doing the proclamation with the grandchildren now, nieces and nephew. Our children are the most precious thing, and sometimes we forget that, and we need to be reminded. And this is a wonderful proclamation. So I would like to read it where it says, "Whereas, science shows that 80% of the brain growth happens by the age of three. And whereas, the beginning from birth to young brains develop like little muscles getting bigger and stronger the more you and your family interact with your child. And whereas, this early development lies in the foundation of learning and well-being that lasts a lifetime. And whereas, when it comes to babies, we all share an obligation with no ifs, buts, or maybe. And whereas, an entire community must unite to provide every opportunity for our children to be, to come to school ready to thrive. And whereas, the Baby, the Basic Chattahoochee Valley, a regional initiative launched by a group of committed individuals and organization through Columbus 2025, are five fun, simple, and powerful ways to help our children aged 0 to 3 grow to be happy and smart. And whereas, the five basics are, one, maximize love, manage stress; two, talk, sing, point; three, count, group and compare; four, explore through movement and play; five, read and discuss the story. Whereas, when everyone in a child's life uses the Basic Chattahoochee Valley from the beginning to the child's arrival at school, ready to succeed and thrive. Now therefore, I, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim this community is now officially a base community and swear off within. I have, I'll hereon to set my hand and a cause of official seal of Columbus, Georgia, to be fixed this day, October the first, yeah, October the first, 2019." It doesn't have the dates. Congratulations. You, you know, I wanted to say something on this. I remember when I first got elected and I went to GMA, and the first meeting, I would say that I went to, we were talking about children, trying to decide at what age, you know, is effective to start children. And right then and there, it was said, at birth, even before birth, reading, playing music, talking, while the child is in the womb, would develop the child for a successful future. So when I read this, this is what I thought about, and I want to say to you and everyone that does this, I'm going to practice these. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing for our children.
Thank you, Council Woodson, and councilors, and mayor, and we, we appreciate the leadership that you guys have given our community in education and through all of the work that you do every single day. I can tell you that Columbus, Georgia, is the first city in our state of Georgia who has adopted the basics and become a basics community. And we are already drivers in making that change in other communities around the state as well. So you're continuing to show your own leadership in adopting this and, and allowing us to make a difference with the little children. It is the little children that will not just enhance our community, like so many other wonderful organizations here, but it is the children that will change not only their lives, but our city that we live in. And we can't wait until they get into school. We have to make a difference from the moment they're born. I have a phenomenal team that I get to work with. I chair the Birth to Pre-K Committee under Columbus's 2025 Initiative. And with me, I've got lots of wonderful, wonderful folks who are working to bring this into our community and really surround everyone. Grandparents, Council Woodson, you brought up a really good point, it's not just for people who have young children, right? It really is for all of us to, when we interact with children, to talk, sing, and point, to count with them, to engage with them, talk about stories, and just show them that it's not just the parents who love them, but we all love them, and they can make the difference. I'm going to allow the rest of the group here to introduce themselves, and thank you again.
I'm Dave White, I'm with Troy University and Columbus 2025.
I'm Jonathan Evans, I'm with the Columbus Housing Authority Resident Services Manager.
I'm Jennifer St. John, I'm with United Way, and we're also the project conveners for Get Georgia Reading, and a proud partner with talented, educated people of Columbus 2025.
I'm Belva Dorsey with Enrichment Services Program.
I'm Megan Holbrook with Highland Community Church and Truth Spring, Inc.
I'm Barbara Mouchon with Literacy Alliance and Columbus Technical College.
I'll tell you, this is, this is part of the Columbus 2025, and it's part of building a capable, skilled, and educated workforce, and it begins at birth. So thank you. Helena, thank you for your leadership, and thank all of you for your commitment. Please let us thank you and shake your hand, come around here, please. All right. Counselor House is going to be offering up a proclamation recognizing the Eighty-Fourth Annual Tuskegee University versus Morehouse College Football Classic Week. There's a rumble in the distance, I can hear it building.
Thank you, Mayor. It certainly is an honor and a privilege to read this proclamation. Whereas, the annual Tuskegee University-Morehouse College Football Classic will be held at A.J. McClung Memorial Stadium on Saturday, October the twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, in Columbus, Georgia, continuing a gridiron rivalry begun in nineteen oh two, with teams playing each other eighty-four times in over one hundred years. And whereas, this classic gridiron rivalry is recognized as the matchless classic of all historically black college football classics, and has the distinction of being one of the longest-running NCAA Division Two classics in the nation, which classic was first played in Columbus in nineteen thirty-five at Memorial Stadium as a direct result of Mr. E.G. Farley, Dr. Thomas Brewer, Dr. Kid Terry, Coach Cleveland L. Abbott, and Dr. Frank Forbes, and has continued to be played here each year with the exception of nineteen seventy-four, when it was played in Cleve L. Abbott Memorial Alumni Stadium at Tuskegee University. And whereas, in nineteen fifty-five, Mr. Gordon H. Kitchen, Mr. A.J. McClung, and Mr. Carl Haywood formed a new classic committee, which continues to operate the classic in keeping with the vision, mission, and precepts of its legendary founders and past leadership. And whereas, this is the eighty-fourth year the Tuskegee University-Morehouse College Classic will be played in the A.J. McClung Memorial Stadium, named for the late Honorable A.J. McClung, a nineteen thirty-three graduate of Tuskegee University, chairman emeritus of the Tuskegee Morehouse Tigers Football Classic, and twenty-nine-year member of the Columbus Council, who served as acting mayor of Columbus in nineteen seventy-three. And whereas, the two teams have, throughout the years, demonstrated an on-field quality of play and competition equal to and characteristic of college football at its best, and coaches and players of both institutions have worked extremely hard to ensure a memorable classic worthy of emulation. And whereas, the presidents, their administrations, faculties, student bodies, alumni, families, and friends have been the support system which accompanies on-field victories with the marching bands, the pipalettes, mahogany in motion, cheerleaders, flag teams, and other auxiliary units at the forefront of all parades. And whereas, the Tuskegee Morehouse Football Classic Committee welcomes the following presidents, Dr. David A. Thomas, twelfth president of Morehouse College, Dr. Lyddie McNair, eighth president of Tuskegee University, Dr. Mary S. Campbell, tenth president of Spelman College. And whereas, the classic, like all classics past, will focus on a prominent parade, a week-long schedule of events, including church services, recruitment activities, media press conferences, golf tournament classic reception, athletic classic banquet, and unbelievable tailgating with thousands of fans from all over the United States and abroad. And whereas, this is the first year that a female serves as classic chair in the history of the classic, we congratulate classic chair, Lisa Goodwin. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim, October the eleventh and twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, as Tiger versus Tiger Classic Weekend, and October sixth to twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, as the Eighty-Fourth Annual Tuskegee University-Morehouse College Football Classic Week.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. We just thank you for continuously recognizing us and being great supporters of this event. We're excited about this Eighty-Fourth Tiger versus the Tiger event, and that's really what it is. I'm over here as a graduate of Tuskegee University, this is the Morehouse man.
Vic Turgis, Morehouse.
Well, but this is our vice chair, and so, you know, we, we have a, a, a great number of people who work to help and put this on, to include our board of directors and, of course, our planning committee. But this year in particular, we have some great things going on. We always start, as indicated in the proclamation, our event off with church services. And this year, we're going to be at the Greater Bellwood Baptist Church, we'll kick it off there. Then, of course, we, we have our, our networking, and then we have our, also our recruitment banquet, those things are, they're, they're great events. We have the, then after that, then we have our news media, Media Day, and that's when we have those schools come together. We have young people from throughout the community, the tri-communities, to be there and learn a little bit about both of those universities, and hear from those coaches and other players. And so it's a great opportunity for them. We then, of course, have, on Thursday, we, we kind of start getting down into it, and that's the networking, and then, of course, we have.
The suites?
Yes, the suites, the social, which is going to be at the suites, and that is our networking opportunity. And then, of course, we have the UFC, and the UFC Fight Pass is going to be at the Civic Center. That's not an official Tuskegee event, but we have a promoter who wanted to partner with Tuskegee Morehouse and provide some proceeds to us for scholarships. And so that was great in itself, just for her to be able to come and say, let me see what we can do for you. Because they know, at the end of the day, what this classic is all about, it's about putting kids in school and getting them out of school. And so it's scholarships, that's what we do. We have fun, have a great time, but at the end of the day, it's about the scholarships. We, of course, on Friday, we then have our chairman's reception, and that is by invitation. And so that's going to be on the Frank K. Martin Pedestrian Bridge. First time ever this year, we wanted to do something a little different. And then, of course, we also have, you'll talk about the golf tournament. And then we will have, I'll let him talk about the golf tournament, but then on Saturday morning, you know, we have the parade, and that start at nine AM. Lineup is at eight o'clock in Phoenix City, then it comes over into Columbus. After the parade, we also have at the stadium, we're doing something a little different, it's called the Scholarship Tent. It's going to be an air-conditioned tent that there, at the stadium, where you can purchase a wristband for twenty-five dollars and eat and drink all you want. So when you leave the parade, you can go on over to the tent instead of just hanging out in the heat. So get some of that air while you can. And so we're going to be having that. But the other thing that we're doing a little different, this is going to be the first time we've ever done this, you know, because it's all about scholarships, if you don't buy a ticket to go into the game, and you just kind of hang out in the tailgate area, you're not doing anything to really support it, because you're just having a big party. Well, what we're doing here now is we have a, it's a cash app. We are offering the cash app, and through that cash app, you can donate any amount to the Tuskegee Morehouse Classic by simply cash apping dollar sign T U M H Classic. Again, any amount to dollar sign T U M H Classic. We are trying to make sure that we're able to write checks to both Tuskegee University and Morehouse College. And so that's what we're looking to do. Now talk about that golf course, I mean, that golf tournament quickly.
I would like to preface this as, Mayor, if you win this year, we will rename the golf tournament after you. Friday morning, October the eleventh, we are returning to our roots. This is the Twentieth Annual Franklin Douglas Memorial Golf Tournament, and for seventeen of those twenty years, we have been to Bull Creek. We are returning back to Bull Creek this year. For those of you other than the mayor who are golfers, we're playing, the West Golf Course was there today, they have declared it in excellent position. We got a hot lunch, buffet lunch after, tee-off time will be eight-thirty. We got hole signs, we got gift bags, it should be a grand affair. And I would like to mention that one of my first guaranteed participants who put it in his daytime was the mayor. So Mayor, we are looking for it, and we will, we will put you off on the first hole. We will put you off on the first hole.
Get the worst out of the way early, I understand.
But I would, but I would like to, I would like to mention one of the things that for four years, I have been the face of the, the classic. And Lisa came in last year as our vice chair, and we made some changes this year, and we basically switched chairs. But I would like to say that she is a grand partner. Isaiah, I would like to thank you for allowing her to be the juggernaut, because she and I talk all the time, and I'll send her a text, and the first thing she says is, I'm in a meeting, I got to call you back. But she is a wonderful addition, and in any organization, you need flesh, fresh blood and new ideas and a new mindset. And Lisa has brought that to us, and I guess like a mom does with, with a child, as you say, she brought in, and she kind of put the focus back on the scholarship end of the classic. And for years, we've been doing this with very minimal contribution, and one of her main, minds, mindsets is to come in and produce more capital for the schools. Both of these schools are private schools, and she understands, having been at Tuskegee, how expensive it is to go to school. And we get calls for Alumni Association all the time for book scholarship money, money to pay off last semester's things, and this is some of the things that we do other than the parade and the parties and the game. At the end of the day, once we pay our bills, we send checks back to the schools in addition to paying for their bus, bus fare down here, the hotel, and the food that they eat while they're here. We assume all those responsibilities as a classic. And we're very proud to have Lisa step in as our chair. She's a great partner, we work very good hand to hand, and Isaiah, once again, thank you for allowing her to be to step in this position, because it makes my life a lot easier having her on the other side, and, and we are a hell of a duo. And I just want to just thank this council for allowing her to be able to assume being the first lady there, she's going to make some hell of a shoes to follow athletics. So once again, Lisa, thank you.
October the twelfth, October the twelfth, at two PM kickoff, Tiger versus the Tiger. The best Tiger will win.
We will say, the best Tiger won last year, so nothing should change this year.
Well, we're excited about this.
Twenty years.
This is, I mean, eighty-fourth edition of this deal, this is a big, big deal. And I urge those that have not experienced the pageantry to get on out there, and it's, it's going to be quite a spectacle. We're so glad y'all are back doing it again.
To see you all out there, thank you.
Now, I'm a scratch golfer, I hit the ball and scratched my head, wonder where it went.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, guys. All right, next up, Council House has another proclamation we're going to be offering up in celebration of Paint the Town Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Ms. Johnston and her entourage, y'all want to come up? Hey, Cheryl.
Thank you, Mayor, it's an honor to, to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the city of Columbus, Georgia enthusiastically joins the state, regional, and national initiative to fight breast cancer on the local front with energy, devotion, and compassion. And whereas, education and early detection is the key to fighting breast cancer, with an estimated one million cases in the United States going undetected. And whereas, on October the eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition will host its tenth anniversary Annual Five K Pink Glow Fund Walk Run to celebrate survivorship, honor those who are currently fighting the battle, and recognize those who have lost the battle to cancer, as well as show support to their caregivers. And whereas, in partnership with Stephen Wilson of the Bikers Battling Cancer, who sponsored a ride to assist those dealing with cancer by circumnavigating the eastern United States, visiting towns named Hope, the Ride for Hope is a ten-day ride to inspire hope for cancer. And whereas, other activities throughout the month include Picture Perfect Survivor Celebration, Dance the Pink Away, Pink Sunday Worship, Painting the Fountain City Pink by turning fountains throughout the city pink, displaying pink ribbons within businesses in honor of breast cancer awareness. And whereas, Paint the Town Pink supports free mammograms and other diagnostic screening procedures for women and men in Columbus and surrounding counties who are not adequately insured, who are in low or moderate income, and who otherwise could not obtain this necessary screening. And whereas, Paint the Town Pink proceeds with, proceeds will all provide funding for the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Program, which is designed to assist cancer patients with their daily living expenses as they go through treatment. And whereas, all citizens of Columbus, Georgia are encouraged to support the efforts of the WCGCC and the volunteers who will participate, and commend the sponsors who will contribute funds to make this year's tenth anniversary Paint the Town Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Campaign a success. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim, October two thousand and nineteen, as Paint the Town Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. I'd like to let my staff and the others introduce themselves. Hi, I'm Darla Spencer, I'm the Cancer Care Access Navigator.
Good evening, my name is Lawanda Waits Arrington, I'm the Finance
I was wondering if Mr. City Manager was going to come and join us, but he's our board chair, and it is truly an honor to stand before you all and say thank you, because 10 years it's been for us coming to City Council and representing those that are in the least of these. We do service the uninsured and the underinsured. And we have several events, as you heard earlier, that will be taking place throughout the month of October. And you have bags that you, also, we ask you to wear your little pink ribbon. It is reusable. It's a little sticky on the back, so put it on, and you can use it throughout the month of, throughout the month of October. And we also, which is just, we just had this new thing we're doing with the YMCA. It's called Think Pink. And during the month of October, they're going to be reducing their joining fees by half. In addition, $5 of those fees will come back to the West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition. So, we are truly excited to be able to work with so many organizations throughout Columbus. And Columbus is such a giving community. We are just truly blessed to be here in this community, representing those. Thank you, Mayor Henderson, for all of your support. He's been supporting us before he was the mayor, donating to us through the organization. And again, Mr. City Manager, thank you so much for all of your leadership as the board chair, for giving us everything that we need. And again, City Council, thank you all for everything that you all have done for us. It is truly, truly a blessing, because we are truly neighbors helping neighbors within our community. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I am honored to serve as chair of this organization. I want to thank Cheryl Johnson, our executive director, our board members, and our staff, our volunteers for all that they do. And, and I was just sitting here thinking, thinking as she was talking, you know, there's so many people I know who are going through with cancer right now or just coming through with cancer that, I mean, I can't even count them. And cancer is just, I mean, it's just everywhere. And we've just got to keep fighting the fight for those who are going through and those who have been through and don't know if they're going to have to go back through. But it's a terrible disease, and we've got to find a cure. But in the meantime, we've got to fight. So, thank you for what you do.
Well, in honor of Mrs. Henderson, who would not let me get out of here without reminding you ladies, and I have no place to say this except that she will kick me in my shins if I don't, ladies, examine. Check yourself. Get your regular checkups. It saved her life. We're grateful that she did. And by the way, I do have my pink on today for you.
Yes. Early detection is key.
Gloria, you want, and she's going to announce the date, right?
Oh, yeah.
Cheryl?
Yes, the date, we have our Picture Perfect, which is Saturday, this Saturday, October 5th, from 10 until 1:00. This event is for all cancer survivors. There's going to be an Ask a Doc panel. It's in partnership with AmeriGroup and Piedmont Columbus Regional. It is at Piedmont Columbus Regional, the Conference Center. And the date for Paint the Town Pink is Saturday, October 18th. We will have registration beginning from 4:00 to 6:00. We have a special survivor parade that starts at 6:00 p.m. at the corner of 10th Street and Broad Street. And then, the actual official race with the runners beginning first will start at 7:00 p.m. The cost is $35. We ask them to register on our website, wcgcc.org. Thank you. Oh, Pink Sunday, third Sunday in, in this month, it is the worship service. We ask any faith-based organization if you would choose us as your charity of choice during that time, taking up a donation or during the benevolence or what have you. That is our day that we, you know, request that funds are donated to us. So, we're looking for a great turnout. We've got a lot of great groups that are sponsoring us, and we're just truly looking forward to being able, again, 100% of the funds remain in this community, and it goes back to those cancer patients. Thank you.
Cheryl, thank you for what y'all do. We appreciate so much what you do to help the fighters in our community. Y'all come around and let us thank you.
Right.
Okay. Counselor Crabbe has a proclamation for early Head Start Awareness Month. And Ms. Dorsey, if you want to come up?
This is kind of exciting, because I worked with, with Belva on, at Neighbor Works Columbus. We were on the board together, so it's kind of neat that I get to read this for you. Whereas, Enrichment Services Program, Inc. is a nonprofit community action agency. Founded in 1965, the mission of ESP is to eliminate poverty through education, services, and partnerships, serving eight counties in Georgia and one county in Alabama. And whereas, Enrichment Services Program, Inc. is committed to increasing the awareness of the impact of poverty and implementing strategies to reducing it, for reducing it. And whereas, ESP motivates residents towards a desirable future and encourages them to become a healthy contributor to the life of our community. And whereas, Early Head Start and Head Start is a national school readiness program that provides comprehensive education, health, nutrition, and parent involvement services to low-income children between the ages of birth to five years. And whereas, Early Head Start and Head Start has nurtured the promise of a better future for low-income children and their families, and more than 958 children locally will benefit from enrollment in the Head Start program. And whereas, October is National Early Head Start and Head Start Awareness Month. Now, therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim October 2019 as Head Start Awareness Month.
Mayor and council members, thank you so much for this proclamation and your ongoing support. We are so very honored to be able to prepare children for school, you know, starting at birth and going through the age of five, and also working with their entire families. So, during the month of October, we invite you to come in and read to the children, whether you want to rock some babies and read and sing to them, or even interact with some of our preschoolers. But you don't have to just do it in October. You could do it all year long. So, we do invite you to come and continue to partner with us. So, I'm going to allow my two other team members to introduce themselves.
My name is Nada Sierra Myers, and I am the Health and Safety Specialist.
Hello, everyone. I am Tracy Belt. I'm the Collaboration Manager of the program.
So, again, we appreciate all of your support, and we're expecting to see you during the month of October.
And I have read for those children, it is probably the most fun, rewarding experience you could possibly do in about a 30-minute, 30-minute period. Counselor Barnes?
Just a, Belva used to read. I'm going to have to get back and start reading again. Belva likes me, because a lot of people don't know, I do voices, too. So, I will do that. I've forgotten, and it was the best time, reading, looking at those fresh faces, reading stories, getting them involved, and letting them know just how enjoyable reading can be. I want to thank you, Belva.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate very much what ESP does. Probably the most key initiative we undertake in any community throughout the country right now is in eradicating poverty. It leads to everything that gives us challenges as a community and as a nation. So, we thank you for your tireless work in that. So, y'all come around and let us thank you, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good seeing you.
Come back, ladies. I can take the picture with Matt with the black commission. Okay. I can take the picture. But she wants to be a part of it. Do it again. Do it again. Do it again. You got it. You got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Next up, Ms. Josephine Ford, and Pop Barnes is going to be presenting.
And last but not least, I've known this young lady for quite some time. She has done so much, so many of the citizens here in our community that might have a little blip, might have slipped a little bit, to help them integrate back into society, Mr. Mayor, and reinforce them and encourage them. And so, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation for Ms. Josephine Ford. It reads thusly, whereas Josephine Ford was born in Phoenix City, Alabama, to James Ford and Leslie Ford with six siblings, Willie James, deceased Leroy, deceased Delois, Gloria, Ruby Lee, and Johnny. And whereas, Josephine Ford graduated from Mount Olive High School in Fort Mitchell, Alabama, she attended Stillman College in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, and received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Alabama in Birmingham. And Josephine also pursued many continuing education hours from Troy State University, Agape College, and Beak Gun College. Whereas, from 1985 to '88, Josephine Ford was a 911 dispatcher with the Phoenix City Police Department. In 1989, a correctional officer with the Georgia Department of Corrections at Rutledge State Prison. For the next 17 years, Josephine was a probation officer with the Georgia Department of Corrections at the Columbus Probation Office. In 2004, she was promoted to intensive probation officer. Then, from 2010 to 2019, she was the center administrator for the Columbus Day Reporting Center. So, she truly worked her way up to the top. And whereas, Josephine Ford had received many certifications, many more than can be placed in this proclamation, but some include post-certified correctional officer in 1989, post-certified probation, probation officer, community supervision officer in 1993, and Georgia crisis intervention de-escalation trainer officer. And whereas, in May 2019, Josephine Ford retired with 32 years of honorable service. And whereas, the mayor and city council of Columbus congratulate and celebrate Josephine Ford for 32 years of honorable service and congratulate her on retirement. And whereas, citizens of Columbus, Georgia are forever grateful for the years of service that Josephine Ford has provided to our community. Now, therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October the 1st, as Josephine Ford Day in the city of Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you.
I just want to say to the mayor, the city manager, and the council members, thank you. It's truly a blessing to be able to retire in good health and in your right mind, especially working with inmates and offenders. But I want to thank you all, because it takes everybody, I mean, to be able to help the Department of Community Supervision, as well as Department of Correction when it comes to our offenders. And I still have a heart for the community. I'm from Phoenix City, but I always say, my family's in Columbus. So, even now, I talked with someone today from the Masses Way, now Valley Rescue Mission for Women's, about how I can come over weekly to do classes. So, it's still a heart for me, because there's so much trauma in the lives of our offenders. And that's what we see on the news, that they're just revolving door to in and out. So, since I still have a heart, it's my goal to go back into the community, not full-time, but to be able to help wherever I can. Thank you again.
Ms. Ford, we appreciate your contributions to the community. Thank you.
And she is an accomplished par excellence vocalist. So, just wanted to add that, because you did a beautiful job at the, at that reception.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come around, let us congratulate you, please.
Thanks. Congratulations. Good luck in your retirement.
Thank you, ma'am. And I don't know if we have anybody here to receive this, but we were going to read it into the record. It's Fine Arts Month, and Counselor Davis, hit your button there.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked earlier about the tremendous growing art culture within our community here in Columbus, and it's the mayor's privilege to recognize through proclamation, Fine Arts Month, and it's my pleasure to read it into the record. The Columbus Arts Guild has been in existence for more than 70 years, serving the city of Columbus in the Chattahoochee Valley by promoting fine arts and encouraging all artists to share their work and ideals with each other and the general public. Whereas, the Columbus Artist Guild, as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, works tirelessly with other art organizations in Muskogee County to promote fine arts. Whereas, guild members serve as a resource to the Muskogee County School District, helping local art teachers in their classrooms, since educating children to the wonders of art is a foundation upon the art world is built. Whereas, the guild also provides two scholarships each year to deserving students enrolled in Columbus State University's Department of Art. The scholarships, which specifically are granted to Columbus State's Fine Arts Affiliate, not only help deserving students financially, but also work to strengthen the bond between the guild and Columbus State, the guild doing whatever it can to support the university's art programs. Whereas, in a continuing effort to promote art in the city of Columbus in the Chattahoochee Valley, guild members display their artwork in the John B. Amos Cancer Center and the Columbus Public Library and other locations for enjoyment of patients, patrons, and the staff of these facilities, and all the effort to promote fine arts. Whereas, with more than 200 members, each year, the guild sponsors its annual members' exhibition, the largest show in Chattahoochee Valley at the Columbus Public Library during the month of October, which attracts thousands of visitors. Whereas, not only does this event benefit the guild members competing for various coveted awards, but it also shines a spotlight of fine arts and the value of promoting arts to all citizens. Now, therefore, I, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Fine Arts Month.
We will, we'll forward a copy of that proclamation on to the Artist Guild. Lastly, two quick resolutions. One is expressing appreciation to Ms. Elena Coats for her meritorious service on the Columbus Ironworks Convention and Trade Center Authority. The other one, expressing appreciation to Ms. Katanga Wright for her service on the Columbus Ironworks Convention and Trade Center Authority. This council hereby expresses its appreciation for the diligent, faithful, and meritorious civic service of both these individuals. Let a copy of this resolution be furnished to both of them as an expression of our appreciation. And entertain a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We will forward the resolution to them. And with no further business this evening?
We move to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.